Good morning. I'm going to call the Tuesday, 21st day of July 2020, Weber County Commission meeting into session. We appreciate the members of the public that are with us this morning, and those that may be listening on the Internet. I'm Commissioner Gage-Fror. To my left, Commissioner Scott Jenkins; to my right, Commissioner Jim Harvey. And we will start this morning's meeting with a pledge of allegiance from Duncan Olson, actually will be leading us in a pledge. Commissioner Jenkins will be giving the invocation, and I will be giving the thought of the day. We'll go to that point before public comments. Mr. Duncan Olson.
Please rise and repeat the pledge of allegiance after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our little fathers who come before thee this day, we give gratitude for this time of the year, for the freedoms we have, for our Independence Day, and now shortly approaching is the 24th of July that represents when the Saints come to the Valley, the pioneers, and the formation of this great state of Utah. We're grateful for these things. Lord, we're grateful for our heritage, and we pray that we'll never forget them. We're grateful for the opportunity we have in serving in government, and trying to make sure the government is fair and equitable for all of the citizens and the people who participate in it, that justice has a blind eye, and that it's done appropriately and with fairness to all the citizens of this great country and this great state. We pray that thou bless us as commissioners, that we'll have not only a desire, but an ability to run this county appropriately, that we'll be fair with all our wonderful employees. We pray thy blessings to be with our employees and the people who work in this great institution. They do so selflessly, and they put a lot of extra time in, and we appreciate them and their efforts. We pray that thou bless them for it. We pray for their health and their strength as well. We're grateful for this time of the year, and we pray that thou bless us, that we can receive some moisture in the future as we go through this dry period, this drought. We ask that thou's spirit, thy spirit would attend us this day, that the things that are said and done will be in accordance with thy holy-minded will, and we do it in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Jenkins. So commissioners, my thought today deals with nature and wilderness. As most, I think everybody's aware, at least up here on the dais, is that I had the opportunity 50-plus years ago, actually my first job, to take a job with the Forest Service, and fortunate to spend three and a half summers in wilderness area in the Uenas. Go in on Monday morning and come back on Friday evening. And so we had a pretty good opportunity to understand nature, wilderness, the opportunities that we have here in the state of Utah, to get out and enjoy true wilderness area. Well, this past week, end of the week, I visited back in, not an area that I spent a lot of time in, but very familiar with it, off the High Line Trail in the Uenas. And with a group, I actually had a son and two grandkids, some friends and family, and I think we had 12 of us total, which is the most allowed in one campsite. And it was the first opportunity for those kids from nine, I think youngest was nine to about 15, to actually be in a wilderness area, to be outside an area where they didn't have the comforts of running to Starbucks, or 7-Eleven, or Maverick for a drink. It was an experience where, in my opinion, it was real life, because instead of being on Facebook, or Instagram, or on the Internet, because there wasn't any service up there, you were more concerned about how we got water, how you drank clean water, making sure that the food that we brought lasted for the day that we had in there, because if you went hungry, you walked out, and it was a fairly lengthy hike, hungry. So I think it's an opportunity that everybody needs to experience, at least in my opinion, because you understand that what we see today with the Internet, especially for these kids, in my opinion, and I had the opportunity to talk to them a little bit about it, that's not real life. Real life, in my opinion, is with nature, when you can experience what we have here as our natural resources, what we've been given, and the opportunity to reflect upon what's important in our lives. And so it was a great experience, plus the experience with family, when you can have the opportunity to have conversations that we probably don't have on a day-to-day basis, because we, quite frankly, don't take the time. So I think that was a great experience for me to get back. Hopefully, I don't have to wait too long before I get back. But there is a quote that I've known for a few years, that I like to just read as a final quote, that I think makes sense for many of us, and about nature. And what it says is, "Reading about nature is fine, but if a person walks in the woods and listens carefully, he can learn more than what is in books, for they speak with the voice of God." That's my thought for the day, commissioners.
Awesome.
Thank you. And so let's go to public comments. Anybody in the audience? I don't see anybody that's probably here that wants to give a thought. Okay. Anybody on Zoom? Stacy, are you monitoring? Anything come through on Zoom?
But I haven't heard from Shelley, so there's not.
Okay, so let's move on. If no public comments, commissioners, let's go to consent items.
None online, Commissioner.
None online. Thank you. Thank you very much. Consent items, agenda items, F1, request for approval of warrants 2904 through 2919, and 45868 through 451008, in the amount of $3,090,524.03. F2, request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $76,624.25. Three, request for approval of the minutes for the meeting held on July 14, 2020. Four, request from the Attorney's Office for approval to surplus office furniture. And last, five, request for approval of a change order number 10 on contract by and between Weber County and the Staker Parsons to address a leak that occurred after our project connected to an existing canal. That's the consent items. Commissioners, questions, comments, before we go to Ricky?
Not for the group this week.
Commissioner Jenkins?
I would like to comment. It's not often we see a million-dollar payment come across our desk.
Right.
You know, even for the county, those are big payments. And there's one in there for granite construction for 1.111 million.
It's James Earl Jones.
1.1.
Oh, hell.
Anyway, I'm assuming that's up on the divide. And we have all had a chance to look at that recently. They've finished that up now, and it's been in the paper. And that's not just a payment. In my mind, it's something to celebrate. We've done really good there. And I'm very happy with it, and I just wanted to call your attention to that.
Yeah, and that was great. And the comments I've heard from those people in the Valley that use that on a regular basis, I don't. I've been very happy. They say it really is a good, clean project, and they're very happy it's back into operation, so they can make that trek into the lower valley.
So, Mr. Chair, with that, I'd make a motion to pay the bills.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Before I place a vote, I'm going to go to Ricky for clarification.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We issued six purchase orders this week for $77,000. About half of that amount, $39,000, is for the Health Department to replace a compressor. 26% or $20,000 is for the library, and that will purchase network hardware. And then 16% or $12,000 is for IT, and that goes towards software licenses. We issued 155 checks this week for $3.1 million. As Commissioner Jenkins mentioned, about a third of that, or 1.1 million dollars.
That's right.
Road construction, boy, at the North Ogden Divide, 21% or $654,000 is also transportation-related costs, and that was primarily Pioneer Road and 2550 South, but also some work done on 5500 South out in Hooper. 18% or $6,000, not 6,000, 18% or probably $46,000 is for the transfer station, and that's for disposal costs. That is not right. It's more like 546,000. That's disposal costs. And then 7% or $29,000 is for the library, and that is for construction up at the Ogden Valley branch.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Ricky, thank you. All right. We've got a motion, additional questions. I'm going to place a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Consent items are approved. Let's go to action items. G1, Weber County Board of Canvas certification of results of the June 30, 2020 primary election. Mr. Ryan Kelly. And I see that we have a handout here. Maybe you can give us some insight. Welcome.
Yes, good morning, commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
I can.
Okay. All right. So before you have the results for the election, but before we get into the results, this was an election unlike any other that we've run before. Obviously, with the COVID pandemic, it altered significantly how we do things. The good thing is, is that we are a vote-by-mail county and have been for a long time, so those burdens were quite a bit less than maybe what other places were feeling. We were able to pull off something that had never been done before. We were able to do drive-through voting out at the fairgrounds, and we were able to keep everybody safe, as well as shattering participation records for any type of primary that's ever been done in Weber County with a 62% turnout. So I really want to thank the Golden Spike Event Center and their staff. They really did a fantastic job of turning that into something that was really a positive experience for those voters that were able to drive through and get a replacement ballot. So the first page of what you had has a graph, and on that graph, it shows all of the number of votes cast in every primary election, going back to 2002. And the right side of that graph, the shaded area, shows when we started voting by mail in Weber County, which was in 2015. And you can definitely see a sharp increase in turnout. And the two elections that we've held this year have been incredible. And the fact that we had a June primary, even with a higher turnout than March, I think is awesome. The people are getting involved, they're participating, and it's been really, I think, a great thing to see so many people engaged in the electoral process. A couple of things to note about this election. When we got back to our office on election night, there were about 20,000 ballots that had not been processed. And that was in large part due to the quarantining of the ballots. We quarantined them for one day, as well as a large number that were dropped off on Election Day. But the really cool thing is, is over the next two days, we were able to process every one of those 20,000 ballots. Yes.
So just to be clear, you quarantined those ballots for 24 hours, one, to keep the poll workers safe because of the COVID. Is that in part correct?
That's the whole reason we did that.
Just making sure that it's clear, and I want it recorded.
Thank you. Yes. And the biggest thing that we did is we had to rethink everything that we did. Even though we're vote-by-mail, there is still a difference, because we had to protect the health and safety of the people handling those ballots. So over those next two days, the Wednesday and Thursday, we were able to process 20,000. We were able to give everybody vote history, verify every single signature, open those up and get them scanned, and be able to release those results on Thursday night, so that we didn't keep candidates in the public waiting longer than they needed to be able to do that. But in reality, in those two days, we did the same amount of work that took us two weeks prior to do. And that took a lot of effort from the seasonal help that we bring in. A lot of volunteers from other county departments came down and helped us with that. Most of all, our full-time staff really did a tremendous job in this election with Daniel, Megan, and Stacy's our new hire as well. That's really made a big difference for us. And she jumped into the deep end a week before the election and just started doing the butterfly stroke immediately and did a fantastic job. And the other thing that I want to point out is less than 1% of our voters came and voted in person. And so we are a vote-by-mail state, and Weber County has been a vote-by-mail county since 2015. And I just want to go on record as saying, this wasn't a decision based on COVID, or the current political climate, anything like that. This has been a methodical decision by Weber County and the state of Utah, being united with the parties, the legislature, the county clerk, and the governor in doing this. And it's really, we can see the fruits of that effort in the participation that we're seeing and the engagement that we have with our voters The Election Day was just a little bit different than anything we'd ever done before. The legislature came out with a bill during the special session, and it eliminated in-person voting, except for if we wanted to, we could opt-in to be a mobile-voting county, and we felt we needed to provide that opportunity for voters that perhaps didn't get a ballot in the mail or needed that replacement. It also eliminated same-day registration, and it forced people basically to register 11 days before the election, which is the registration deadline. And that was very successful. We saw a big increase in that effort there. And it also eliminated early voting. But still, we see, even with those policies in place that were there to protect poll workers and voters, we still see that the participation in this election was off the charts, which is fantastic, because you always see those kind of policies, and your first thought is, oh, are we disenfranchising voters from participating? Clearly, it didn't have that effect. We saw a record number of people be able to participate. And so that was really, really neat. Voters got the message and responded to that. So let's jump into just a couple of the numbers really quick, before we get to the results that you're here to look at. On the Republican side, we had a 66.4% turnout. On the Democratic side, we had a 47.7% turnout. 99.1% of our ballots were either placed in a drop box or in the mail, and only 0.9% were in person. We counted 43,307 by mail ballots, and we had a 0.8% undeliverable rate. And if you think about any mailing that's ever been done, to get down to a 0.8% undeliverable is an incredibly small number. And so our voter rolls right now are extremely, extremely clean. So we're not getting all that mail ballots back undeliverable. We're actually getting them to the voters where they're intended to go. And we had 148 ballots that were returned past the deadline. That's one of the other changes that the legislature made, was changing the deadline from being the day before the election to Election Day. We're pretty indifferent to that, but it doesn't seem to have made a huge impact in the percentage that were returned late. It's roughly the same percentage that we've been seeing with that change, but it didn't adversely affect voters, which was good. We had 102 ballots that were not signed at all, despite the big red arrows. I know I've talked about this in Canvas before, but we have big red arrows saying, sign here. I don't know how we get people to sign their ballots. You know, that's a tough one, because without it being signed, that serves as the showing identification of the polls. So in total, we had 289 that they didn't match the record. Every one of those voters, including the unsigned, were sent a letter stating why their ballot was being challenged, and they had the opportunity to correct that. Of those, those are the ones that did not respond to that letter. So we had 539 in total that were rejected. On the provisional ballots, we had 12 that were counted, 33 that weren't. And that's kind of flipped from what we usually see in the numbers that we present. 12 of those were not registered, so had we been able to do same-day registration, that's 12 more votes that would have been able to be counted. One of them didn't fill out their application completely. 16 of those were registered with the wrong party. And typically, what we saw is the independent American registration. I think people sometimes check that, thinking it means that they're not affiliated, but that is actually a political party. And so then when they wanted to participate in either the Republican or the Democrat, their party affiliation didn't allow that. So we weren't able to count those provisionals. Three of them had already voted a different party ballot. So if somebody was a Democrat and voted the Democratic, then they wanted to come and vote in the Republican. Obviously, their party registration wouldn't, but they'd already returned that other ballot anyway. And then one of them, there was another reason why that wasn't counted. So after all of that, basically, let's get to the fun part. The race that you're really hearing in Canvas is on the last page of the results, which is the county recorder race. With that, Leon Kiltz got 21,946 votes, which is a 65.34%. And James Coats got 11,640 votes, which was 34.66% of the votes. So Leon Kiltz was victorious in that race. So with that, are there any questions? The rest of the results in here are multi-county races, so this represents Weber County's portion of those. Obviously, those will be canvassed tomorrow at the Lieutenant Governor's Office.
Thank you. Ryan, questions, commissioners, or comments?
What's the disparity in ballots cast for state races or national races versus county races? I mean, some people would vote for maybe the county, but they don't participate in the state, or they vote for county and state, but I don't want to do any congressional seats, or vice versa. I'd only want to make sure I vote congressional. I don't care. Is there, or do people pretty much check all the boxes, and if they only vote for one, is that an incomplete ballot? Is it counted, or is it still counted, but it's just, it's not counted for the others? What's the explanation on that?
Yeah, so there is a difference, and you will see kind of the further down a ballot something gets, the fewer votes there are. So if we look at governor, there was 35,737 votes cast. When we got down to the recorder, there were 33,586. So basically, 2,000 people chose not to vote for the recorder. And that's not atypical. You really see it, like in November, you'll see a huge difference between, you know, president, governor, those kind of things. You really see it when you get down into like the judges and things like that. There's a huge drop-off with the number of people that do that. But the good thing is, is whatever you vote on the ballot is counted. So if you only voted for recorder, that was counted. Everything else was blank. Obviously, it's not going to be a vote cast, but that vote for recorder did count. Same thing if you only voted for Congressional District 1, or governor, or 2 or 3. Whatever you voted on the ballot is counted.
You know, Ryan, I love hearing these reports every so often when you give them, whether they're on the odd or even years, depending on where they are. And you're so good at your craft, you and your team. I just really appreciate the process that we go through here in Weber County. Ricky, I trust this process. I've seen it firsthand, not on Election Day, but to the trainings that you provide candidates in advance, so that people can become familiar with how this is done, and they can learn for themselves whether or not they choose to trust the process or not. I also know that on the website, I believe it's on your website, Ryan, you've got that video that was made, so people can do it now virtually and see that process, which is very informative and, I think, helpful. People can find and decide for themselves this process. I think this represents now seven years we've done mailing, vote-by-mail. It continues to be really, I think, really good. You've improved your processes in that seven years, and I feel like it's secure. I feel like that some of the things that we hear in the press or the media, I don't think that we experience those here, certainly not to any type of degree, oh, it might happen onesie-twosie. But I like the process after, if people try to commit fraud, and how they're indicted. You really take this seriously, and I'm really impressed with our department here in Weber County. You've done a wonderful job.
Thank you. It's a lot of people that put in a lot of hard work to make it successful, but thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Just no comments. Commissioner Jenkins?
Yeah, I have to comment on this. I agree with Commissioner Harvey. You've done a great job, Ryan, in your department, and you should be giving that a voice for that. I happen to have friends that were employed by you down there, so I walked in and watched that operation many times while it was taking place. And it's fascinating to watch. People say, they get in this mindset, that those ballots come in and they simply are opened and put in a machine to run through, and that's it. And that's so far from the truth of anything funny. When you look, that each signature is verified, and that each ballot is scrutinized, and they go through in detail when they come in. And when you look at these numbers, and look at the number of ballots that were provisional, the ones that not counted, or that were spoiled, that there were issues, we're at a level that probably is better than when we voted face-to-face almost. I mean, it's that good now. That's first thing. Second thing I want to comment on is, you know, there's, well, there's a couple of things I want to comment on here. First of all is, you worry about fraud, and we get emails on people who hammer us a little bit on the possibility of fraudulent votes coming in. And I admit that there's possible that some could do it. But it is so diverse and so well-spread out, that the possibility of fraudulent votes coming in, well, I think you said it yourself, two years ago, we ended up with 19 in question. We went through those 19 and ended up actually prosecuting one person, right?
I don't think they were prosecuted, but they did receive a letter and were talked to. I don't think that. In the petition, there were some petitions where we found fraud, and there were two people there that were prosecuted for fraud.
Okay.
Based off of the same principles.
So that's out of an entire election we ran. And so I feel really good about that. That makes me really happy. The one area that remains high of probability of fraud, and I would say it really isn't fraudulent, and that is vote harvesting, where they actually go door-to-door and ask people if they've voted yet, and if they haven't, can I take your ballot and harvest it for you? And in some cases, they have them vote, and they simply turn it in. In other cases, they give them the blank ballot, and they say, sign it, and then they fill it in. So who knows? That is one area that, but now to my final point. We've made it so easy here, that I'm really not in favor of doing any more than we've done. You know, when you look at these numbers that you've presented for the last four or five years, you know, voting in this country is a privilege, and it's a responsibility that we have. And if people do not take the time and effort to educate themselves about the candidates, to go out and to make sure their vote counts for something, well, then it makes me wonder if they should be voting. And we've made it so easy that all they have to do is tear it open, put a couple of checks in there, sign it, reseal it, and put it in the, and they don't even need to put it in the mailbox. They go to a drop box and put it in. Well, that's almost effortless. And if that isn't good enough, then that's too bad. They lose their ability to vote, because they've got to make some effort, even if it's getting out of bed in the morning. And they don't do it. So I'm amazed by these numbers. I'm amazed by what's happening. And like I say, there are those who would argue we've made it too easy. I'm just telling you, Ryan, you've done a magnificent job. And Ricky, I know you're highly thought of when it comes to elections across the country. You've attended lots of national conferences, and you've been a speaker, and you're highly thought of in those circles, and you guys have just done a great job. I'm really proud of the elections office. I'm really proud of the elections office in Weber County and what you've done, Ryan. So congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner. So obviously not only do we have confidence in what Ricky and Ryan, you've done as the election office, the public has. With 99.1% of the people voting by mail shows that the public trusts the process. We know, we've seen the process. We trust it. We know what you go through. But the important part is, is that, you know, the 99% is an amazing number. You had 410 people out of close to 45,000 people that decided they didn't trust the system or decided to vote in person. To me, the proof's in the pudding. I think that what we just said up here on the dais is very true. We have a system that people can put faith in, that use it. It is easy. But again, that's, I think, a, something the county has proven that they can manage and, and get these ballots in the hands of people in a manner that they're comfortable with returning and feel confidence that their vote does count. So again, congratulations. With that, commissioners, I would entertain a motion to approve the canvas that was presented to us of the results of the June 30, 2020 primary election.
So move. And I will second with a question to Ryan. So this represents the votes only in our county?
Correct. Yes.
Yeah, second.
Primary election for Weber County.
Do that.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries. It's approved. Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Again, thanks for all your hard work. Let's do action item G2, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and the Horse Nation Indian Relay Council to hold an Indian race relay event at Weber County unfair fair. Duncan Olson.
Morning commissioners. Yeah, pretty excited about this. The Horse Nations Indian Relay is what we had last year. They are really excited to come back. They, we had a conversation with the producer just last week. They had a big event up in, I believe, South Dakota and had record numbers. And so they're, they're planning on bringing a lot of teams and bringing a lot of fun to the unfair. And so this is the contract between us and them to bring them back.
Thank you. So this is the same group we had last year?
Yeah, same group. They, they bring the, the cultural significance behind the Indian relay races and they do their presentation before the race and then they obviously produce the race as well.
Yeah. Great presentation. Questions, comments? Commissioners? Commissioner Harvey, this is in your portfolio.
Yeah, I'll just say Duncan, you know, in today's age where we're careful on how we refer to people, Indian relay races? Why that name? Who chose that?
I believe the Horse Nations, that's their name. That's what they go by. They're, they're proud of their heritage. They're proud of their culture. It's not something that we have named them by any means. We, we are just regurgitating what they call themselves.
It's great to know. Thank you. So if people have issue with that, they ought to contact that those people.
Yeah, Calvin Ghost Bear would probably take those questions gladly.
His last name is?
Ghost Bear.
Ghost Bear. Yes, I.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the contract by and between Weber County and the Horse Nation Indian Relay Council.
Thank you.
For the races. And I do want to make a comment.
Go ahead.
You know, these are amazing races to watch and these folks, there's a couple of reasons that they do what they do. Number one, they celebrate their heritage prior to these races and I agree. And it's fun to watch and it's entertaining for children to go out here and see another lifestyle and watch what these folks do. Number two, the other reason I think they do this is for their issue. It demonstrates their talents and their abilities as a horseman. You know, these people survived and lived on horses and they never had saddles. And that's what this is all about, is to show that they can, they can demonstrate skills as a horseman and ride bareback as well as some of these others riding with saddles. And it's amazing to watch them, how they do this and it's so entertaining. And I tell you, I'm in awe at the skill that some of these guys have when they, when they jump on these horses and ride them bareback at these speeds. It's amazing and fun to watch. It's very fun to watch. So anyway, did I make a motion in that?
You had a motion. We didn't hear a second.
That just was waiting until it was my turn.
Until I shut up.
Commissioner Harvey?
Second.
Comments?
No, this is great.
Okay, we have a motion in a second and, you know, I'll, again, just make a comment. First opportunity I had to see these Indian relay races were actually up when I was with Gloria and when she was running barrels at Southeast Idaho. And it's, it's amazing. And I, I agree with Commissioner Jenkins. It's, it's a heritage that they're proud of. It's, it's horsemanship, you know, it's, it's entertainment. But if anything, they're very proud of their heritage that goes back to the horse community. And I think it gives them an opportunity to, to show that to a society that really hasn't ever seen that before. So it's a great thing. With that, we have a motion and we do have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you Duncan. Let's go to three action item. Request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Broken Heart Rodeo Company to hold the rodeo at the Weber County Unfair Fair. Mr. Olson, you're still on.
Yes. So this, this is between us and Broken Heart. They've done our rodeo for 20, 25 years. The All Weber, the Weber County Fair, they've, they've kind of been our, our main producer for a long time. They do a great job. And so this is, this is pretty much our standard contract. You know, I, I do want to mention we're going out of our way. We're not going to have a maximum capacity. We're following along with the health department. We're limiting seating. We're, we're making sure people are wearing masks and being safe. And so we're, we're pretty excited to have the unfair this year.
Great. Thank you. Commissioners, comments?
You know, I would like to comment on the fact that we just got notice. I opened the paper yesterday and seen in there were the Salt Lake or the State Fair has pretty much gone to what we're doing. It's not a traditional fair. It's cut way back. It's along the same lines of where we're going. And so it gives me comfort in the decision that was made with a little pushback, but amongst the three of us. I think somebody amongst us had a great, had great vision as to how things would be. Anyway, with that, I'd make a motion that we approve the contract between Broken Heart Rodeo and Weber County.
Thank you for that motion. Do you have a second?
Yeah, I, it's wonderful to just sit back and learn and it's great to see the tides change. It's absolute second. Thank you.
Thank you. And yeah, I think that we're all excited about the events on the unfair. I really am anticipating that the public's going to accept this in both the health aspect of that we're taking the, taking the concerns of the environment away. We're going to provide the rodeo, the relay races, entertainment from a well-known entertainer. And I think there was one other, oh, and then the junior livestock.
Yeah.
Show. So I think this is something that we, as we debated this back and forth, not always 100% in agreement. I'm looking forward to because I, I think that this will prove that, that the citizens of Weber County support these events. So thank you very much.
We, we're really appreciative of being able to, to do this. We've, we've failed all along that we've let out in a lot of areas. And so it, to me, it's not surprising that the state fair is following suit and doing what we're doing. Because I feel like we, my team is, has put their, their heads down and have been working this entire time trying to make sure that we could do as much as we could for our, our customers. So.
Yeah. And you absolutely have done that with Marty, yourself, Jennifer. You put together a budget that we're very comfortable with and, and I'm, I'm almost positive that that budget will come in line with, and actually be less expenditure to the county than we've seen in some previous years.
Yeah.
To put on a full fair, not the unfair.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The popularity, I'm actually concerned because of the popularity. You know, they under, they understand the people. And sorry, sorry, but they understand that there's not a lot going on. The video within 24 hours after we put that fair announcement or the unfair announcement out, commissioners, had over 15,000 views and over 400 shares within 20, just within 24 hours. And so we may have another problem on our hands by just making sure that we, we limit and make sure we're safe. And so a lot of people are wanting, they like what we've seen. So.
Absolutely. And yeah, I didn't want to overlook Ashton Wilson's.
Right.
You know, professionalism and making sure this was also, he's part of this team that's been probably one of the most integral.
Yeah, she's worked countless hours and, and you know, she's been under a lot of stress because she had to plan a full fair. And then she had to plan a green fair, a yellow fair, a red fair, an orange fair, a purple fair and, and everything in between. And so she's worked her tail off and we're excited that we'll be able to at least reap some rewards and give back to, to Weber County because that's, that's who we're, we're really fighting for.
Yeah. Please give her our thanks as well Duncan, because I pretty much appreciate it. And it hasn't been, it hasn't been easy. It's been a moving target as we all know. But that target's about ready to hit its mark. So we'll see that in just, I guess, two, two to three weeks, Commissioner. It'll be there. Okay.
Fifth through the eighth.
All right. Thank you very much. We did have a motion, I remember, some time ago and a second. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Duncan for being with us. Let's go to commissioner comments. Commissioner Harvey? Words of wisdom?
Love that. One day, but nothing, no comments. Thank you.
Really?
Commissioner Chair, yeah.
Okay.
I, I, I will say this. This is probably important for the tape, just for the thing. You know, we've, over the last really two, three, four weeks, and maybe we're just getting a little, feeling a little bit kennelled up here with this COVID. But we've really gone at it behind the closed doors in the last little bit. And I so appreciate the relationship I have with the two of you. We go at it and then the next very, it's not even, it's not even a minute or two. And then right, okay, well, let's sit down for lunch or next meeting, we're up. It's like it's forgotten. It's all done. We make decisions based on our experiences. And I really appreciate that. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for your leadership. It's working out fine.
Thank you very much. It's a, it's a great opportunity to work with both you and Commissioner Jenkins. And as you mentioned, you know, we, we're not bashful about stating our views and we have a difference of opinion. And as I mentioned to Commissioner Jenkins yesterday in a fairly aggressive meeting, that, that.
In a heated moment.
That, that results in good decisions and that we should never shy away from having those discussions and bringing those on the table. And I think we show that. And I think Commissioner Jenkins mentioned to somebody that, that walked out and said, you just, you just saw a good demonstration of what happens between the house and the senate. And of course, you know, the house always prevails. So Commissioner Jenkins, you get the last word.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. You know, you could kind of see where I was going yesterday and you were kind of jockeying around and it was fun to watch that and participate. And I'm telling you, in the end, we, we made a good decision. We both, we all felt comfortable with. And I really appreciate both my fellow commissioners working on this hard. We try hard to get along and work with each other and I appreciate it. And I want you to know it. It, it demonstrates and looks, you can see it and everybody in the county, the other employees watches. And they see that we're trying to do what's best for them and for the county. And I, I just tell you, it's, it's important to me and I thank you both for your involvement here. You're doing a great job. I want you to know it. And with that, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. We had a motion adjourned, non-debatable. All those in favor say aye.
Well, I was hoping that our chair may have a couple of comments before we leave, but.
I said mine, so.
Okay, fine.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We're adjourned.